Turner, you can unmute and make your comment.
Good evening, Council. My name is Brandy Turner. I live at 2065 Bobcat Valley Court. I was also at the Planning Commission meeting and I thought that the community had a lot of really good input that I'm honestly just not seeing here. I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Lakine for bringing up the issue of parks, especially on the western side of the development. When you look at that plan, there is zero consideration for any open space. And the first community member that came up, and I apologize, I don't remember your name, brought up a great point. Where will the people go? They're in a bit of an island there. So if you, as the developer, are not conscientiously taking into consideration that there needs to be open space for the community that you're building for, then I think you've missed the mark heavily. Another point to the applicant is, I've heard, I've heard you say it so many times, again and again, that you said you aren't welcome in Monument. And there isn't anyone that I can see so far that has said, "Go away." I feel like you're not listening. It's clear that you're not listening. Not one community member says, "We don't want you here." We are asking you to simply listen. You met with Council, and I can imagine, because I know all of them, that not one of them said to you, "You know what? I love this plan of high density, and I think my community will too. Run with it." I know every single person sitting on that dais, and I cannot imagine one of them did not give you the feedback to say, "If you come to us with high-density housing, the community will revolt. We're going to ask you to bring that density down." So all I ask of the applicant is to please just listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Lakine, Commissioners. My name is Roy Martinez. I live just east of the Monument Ridge East Proposed Development, Annexation Number Two, in the High Pines Owners Association. My comments are primarily, of course, primarily related to the east side, even though some are applicable to the west side as well. I want to speak to what the decision that's going to be made tonight, that the Council will make, and what that means to the community. First of all, I think we all realize development's going to happen here, one way or another, whether it's with El Paso County, or whether it is with the town of Monument through annexation. Now, do I or others in the community like the idea of this parcel being developed? The answer is no. There's going to be an impact. There's going to be an impact in quality of life, lighting, traffic, access. We've heard it all tonight. However, I'm also a realist, and I realize that, you know, there may not be a lot of choices. The reality is, you know, we might as well have the best development go forward if one is going to happen. It is attractive land with current zoning, as we've heard tonight. A vote "no" on this development means a vote "yes" for the county. There's no reason the developer would not go to the county if this is voted down tonight. And we all know how development has went at the county. This property needs to remain residential, so long as it's compatible with the surrounding community. And we are fortunate that the developer, so far, has been very responsive, I believe, in listening to the input by the community. They have met with the community, both adjacent and just outside of it, to present to them their proposals, and have even taken into consideration some of those comments, and have made some modifications. So, we might as well stick with a plan that makes sense. We might as well have the tax dollars stay with the town of Monument. And I'd much rather see the town of Monument oversee this particular development, rather than El Paso County. I know going forward, as this were to develop, if it is annexed, we can pick up the residents, the community can pick up the phone, because we know the developer has met with us. We know that we can pick up the phone and express our concerns with however it might be progressing over the next three to five years. Once again, we have a dialogue. In closing, I believe this is the best thing for us going forward, not only as residents, but also the town of Monument. So once again, a vote "no" means a vote "yes" for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold Larson, live at 20270 Billwood Drive.
Hey, folks. Folks. We have people testifying up here. Please give them some courtesy.
When I bought the land, I looked behind, beautiful view. It's just flat-out beautiful. But I also knew it was owned by a developer. Okay, we've had some conflicts with the old owner from when we first bought it. We have a "do not trespass" sign on there, and the old owner of this land was in conflict with us. Well, I know it's going to be developed, but about a year and a half, two years ago, it was sold to a new owner. Okay, and so it's a little trigger in my mind, something's going to happen here, and what is that going to happen? Do you have that slide that, if you could put it up? Okay, it is. Well, the next trigger point was this land, right here. And I think I got the wrong picture up there. But this is the land as it's classified is RA, all right, as the current submission has asked. Prior to this, the colors, this is a county website. Prior to this, the colors showed apartments on the west side, south. They showed apartments on the east side, south. And I'm sitting there thinking, okay, what is the county going to do with this? This doesn't match up with the zoning I know. So I'm talking with the county commissioner, our county commissioner. And I say, "All right, now what's it going to take for this zoning to be changed?" And she said, "Well, if it applies and fits with our master plan," you know, that's the issue, our master plan. I looked up the master plan. And I read the master plan from beginning to the end. That does not have boundaries. It has very flowery statements about what they want to occur. But how it applies to a little parcel of land in this county is up to those five commissioners. We have a solid commissioner, but she's one of five. And there's four other commissioners that are looking for things like affordable housing. Now, in my mind, okay, we've said, "Affordable housing?" My grandchildren can't afford an apartment at $2,000. What would make an apartment more affordable? More apartments would make apartments more affordable. It's a supply-demand issue, and that's the way the county thinks. So we have trees. I love those trees, Steve, okay? We've had private conversations with the developer, very detailed conversations on how to create berms, how to create barriers, how to replant the trees, conduct a nursery in there. We are going to have that same issue. We are going to have that same issue with the county on trees. But we have a little bit more influence here, if you're in control, okay? We talked about this plan being the bare bones. This is the worst-case scenario on density. All right? What is going to happen from here? There's negotiations on the trees. We just talked about some in-person negotiations on parks, on how those ponds will look, opportunities for people to walk through these developments. I'm fearful of the county. I play poker, so I'm not that fearful. But I am more confident walking into this negotiation on the detail of this development with you guys at the plate, rather than with somebody that's really disconnected from me. I'm not in the city. What was the word you used? It was a word. Disenfranchised.
You've got to continue facing us.
Okay, disenfranchised, okay? I might feel, I don't feel disenfranchised from you guys. I really don't. I feel a customer. I feel part of this community. But I do feel disenfranchised with the county. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Linda Baldini. I live on the west side. I'm very passionate about this. I'm sorry I interrupted earlier. I believe so many people are, because this is where we live. They've all mostly just brought up valid, valid concerns. Mine is mostly water. It's the first time we've ever lived on a septic system and well. The water on the west side is a huge concern. My question is, is, you know, I've heard, like they said, "This is worst-case scenario," but then he also said, "No, there's absolutely no way they're going to go down on those numbers." Well, how would they put in a park, then? And it is an island. I don't know if anyone has ever driven on Beacon Light. It is dirt at the top there. It is pavement down. This is so disjointed. I don't know if the annexation happens, if the county will still be in charge of Beacon Light. I wasn't quite sure about that. It wasn't very clear. But there is a little bit of a sidewalk at the end, down near the police department, just leading up to the trailer park. There is no connection from us further up to down. And how would we connect to the east side over I-25? Like, I would have liked to have seen the plan also. I do believe, we do know it will be developed, but I just feel like, also, like everybody said, it will just be ramratted through. But my big point was, and I brought this up at the commission meeting, when there is a bad storm, they close down 25 with the gate. We were out during the bomb cyclone with 10 children, trying to get home to our house. But, you know, these trucks don't stop. Okay, so there's a gate. They put in ways. And ways will tell them, "Oh, go down Beacon Light." So we were almost home, but two trucks had jackknifed. We were not able to get home. We had to backtrack to Larkspur, sleep in the fire department. So what do you think's going to happen if there's two huge developments built on each side with all these more people? I-25 is going to close during these storms, and all of those trucks are going to go down Misty Acres. They're going to go around that roundabout. It might not be a traffic all the time. They'll go down Beacon Light. And Beacon Light already is a nightmare at 105, and Beacon Light, there's just a stop sign. I'm surprised there's not an accident there every day. So it just seems so disjointed to put in all of these more people, and then what happens with the rest? Okay, so they've taken care of that infrastructure, but what about the rest of our infrastructure in Monument? It's just not there, and I think putting a pause on it is a good idea. I don't know, you know, what the whole process would be. In a way, I, you know, I was at their Woodmore meeting. I kind of like their plan, and I hate to say that. And I do believe if you're in control, that's much better than the county also. So there's both of the sides. But I do apologize for interrupting earlier. I'm just very, I just think we all feel like this is our home, and we don't get to vote. And so this is the only way I can even let any of you know how we felt, so thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Excuse me. My name is Steve Draper. I live at 3125 Hamill Circle, which is that way, I think, up high. Yeah, great comments, both sides. I'm not going to talk much, because the architect gentleman was amazing. I would recommend everybody go back to his comments, and that's my viewpoint, essentially. But I do appreciate you all and some of your comments and questions, especially, well, Steve King. Appreciate your concern about the trees, and especially the water, the mayor, as well as the parks. And the one that really got me was Mr. Kimpel, who asked the developer, "Well, would you be willing to consider less density?" And I think in one word, he said, "No." And I'm sorry, Mr. Developer, but everything is negotiable, absolutely. So if you don't think you need to negotiate with some of these great things and concerns, then I think we need to go back to that architect gentleman and listen to his concerns, because he said it so eloquently. Then you all, I trust, are going to be representatives of all the emails you've gotten, all the concerns. You know, pretty much majority kind of wins. I think you all would agree, if I'm not wrong. But again, I'm not going to, that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Green, and I am on the Planning Commission. Would it be possible to get the annexation agreement up? I have handouts if not. I wanted to talk about the annexation agreement. This is a little bit different than what other people have been talking about. I have some pretty grave concerns on getting it out. And I do have handouts if they can't get it up on the board. I was a city planner for several decades, so I have done many annexations. I'm very familiar with them. Very familiar with annexation agreements. And it looks like I'm just... The one on the west side and the one on the east side are similar, but I'm going to use the one on the west side. And I'd like to just start with the items and say, "I'm extremely concerned that a conceptual plan is going in the annexation agreement, even though it's kind of glousy-goosy, and it says, 'Well, it may be worst-case scenario. It could change.'" An annexation agreement is a contract. It is a contract. Once signed, it is binding. It is not perfect. It is not a subdivision agreement. It is not a public improvement agreement. And the only time in planning we use these contracts is for annexation. What do you want from the people that are asking to come into your town? This is what you put it in, and there aren't really any restrictions on it. You could ask for an ice skating rink, or baseball fields, or, now, they may not want to give it to you, but you could ask for anything. So first of all, putting a conception plan in an annexation agreement is, to me, entitling that conception or conceptual plan. It's an entitlement for it. I don't think that's a good idea. There's a process for that, and I think it ought to be used. Same with the second one, zoning. You already have a resolution changing the zoning. Why are you going to put zoning in your annexation agreement? It's probably not a good idea, especially when you have some conditions to a zone. That's just a little odd. The third one is the Metropolitan District. Now, that is something that usually would go in an annexation agreement. I agree with that. I didn't read the plan for it. I don't know what's in it. I don't know if you like it or not, but that seems reasonable. Land dedications. I think it's interesting that the land dedications we're asking for are the exact same things we're going to ask for in subdivision. We're not asking for anything more. You want your park? This is when you do it. You want some road improvements that are outside of this development? This is when you want to do it. The next one, plans and studies. Same plans and studies we're going to ask at subdivision. What else do you want? Anything? That's what this is for. I thought it was very interesting in your packet that the county is asking for more plans than we are. They're wanting plans on the east side. They want to know about roundabouts. They want to know how they can make improvements. We're really not doing anything other than, and the next one, saying you're going to build your internal roads. We're going to do that anyway. You know, anything else you want with roads? The water supply, it's been mentioned so many times, I just, I almost, you know, hate to mention it again, but if anything, they should be coming to the table with more water, more, or more water infrastructure, not less, 20 acre feet less. That's a big deal in an annexation. So those are kind of my comments. I stood up because I was hoping, whether you, well, whether or not you support the annexation. And as far as the zoning, I did not vote at this meeting. I was on remotely out of town, so I participated. I did not vote. 100% support the two-and-a-half acres. I think that's a good idea. But I was hoping that this body would consider tabling the annexation agreements and giving those some thought and getting back to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give it, we have two people online. I would like to let them have their chance. Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Okay. Santos, would you like to unmute and make your comments, please?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Hi, my name is Santos Rivera. I live at 20045 Mepham Court. That's really, really close where I'm pretty sure the developers were cut down all those wonderful trees that are on the other side. But bottom line upfront, I just want to say that this proposed on the west side should not be developed at all. In the last meeting, I talked about the environmental impact that's going to have in the area that we live. And the whole reason why we moved to this area is we love the area. We fell in love with the area. I'm a retired military police officer with 27 years of service. What I found out about Monument, because my boys played ice hockey at the ice rink, that, by the way, one of them joined the Army, and the other one is playing for Arizona State University. The increased level, multi-level housing in the area, it will increase the amount of people in here, but it's also going to increase the amount of crime that is going to be attending this town. And I'm telling you what, this town is awesome. You have the peace of mind of just walking downtown and having a good time, or having a coffee, eat some ice cream, and on the weekends, everybody knew or saw it during the Fourth of July festivities, and everything was tremendously done really well, and no issues whatsoever. I'm going to go back to the environmental, because I'm pretty sure that I know the developer said that they will relocate the trees. I don't think he will do that. It's going to cost so much money to relocate those trees. And on top of that, there's a lot of wildlife that goes within that area, too. So we're going to be missing out on all the wildlife, deers, beers, deers, and everything that's going on in that area. And to top it off, I know the developer said that they were going to relocate that pond. I don't think they'll have the resource to do that either. And the most important thing is that property value in this area is just going to go away. Now, again, I'm retired. That's why I love this area. A property value is going to go way down, and it's going to affect not only myself and my family, but everybody else in this neighborhood. And at last, I want to say that definitely, if you guys can disapprove this proposal, I appreciate it. If you guys go forward with approving this proposal, you might as well change the logo that's right behind you guys and put some apartments and duplexes back there, because all those trees that I see on that logo is going to go away. So I might as well change that. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. All right, Robin, you can unmute, make your comments.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd just like to kind of point out about just having a common sense approach to all this. I hear a lot of talk about traffic, but the people that are talking that make it sound okay, they're not driving up here during all this school time. We've had three kids since 2018 go through Palmer Ridge, and if, many times a day, that place is totally gridlocked right now, before you put all these houses in there. And when I say gridlocked, I mean, you cannot go in or out of the school. And so cars start parking on the sides of the roads, all the way up Misty Acres, and then kids are walking to those cars to their parents. They're going across the street. And so it's very dangerous. You can only go literally like three to five mile an hour through there, and it's completely gridlocked. So that's just a common sense approach. The other thing is, I hear a lot about replanting trees. And I have done six trees on my property on 1981 Ford Doewood, and some of these are upwards of 25-foot ponderosa pines, and they have a less than 30% life expectancy. So when I contracted that out, they told me, "Hey, when we transplant these, you know this is a big risk." And when we bring things from outside, you know this is a big risk, and you have to be willing to put 100 gallons a day in every tree just to give it a chance. So I don't know if that's going to happen, but it's a major risk. So it's easy to say things like, "Oh, we're going to transplant and make a berm," but it's another thing to have a common sense approach, like, how are you going to keep those trees from actually dying? The other thing is, I've been at all these planning commissions, and all along, when we did the Jackson Creek, and there were several studies by residents and also by somebody on the board that with all the development and all the townhomes and all the Jackson Creek, at that time, they were saying they were only 65% filled. So there was huge vacancies all through, yet everybody keeps saying, "We need more housing. We need more. We need more." Yet what we have is, and we're building more already, they're not even filled. So again, that's a common sense. And the other thing I like to say is that I'm a business owner. I've been in business my whole life, many different businesses. And I agree with the folks that talk about risk. I've had great ones. I've made a lot of money, and I have other ones that failed, and I lost a bunch of money, and I didn't have anybody bail me out. It's not our responsibility to, if somebody bought a property that's high-risk, that we have to come to the table to eliminate or mitigate their risk. That being said, what looks good on Misty Acres and all those houses on Misty Acres that are on half-acre lots or quarter-acre lots, that look, looks good going through there. High-density duplexes and fourplexes are out of place, and they don't fit that hill, just like the current houses that are there. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate everybody being on here late. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Okay. Stephanie, you can unmute and make your comments, please. Stephanie, you're still muted. We can't hear you. We can hear you. You have to unmute your microphone. Still muted. All right. Drew, go ahead and swap her. Okay, Laura, you can unmute and make your comments, please.
You're over two.
Not the first time. Laura, I don't know if you can hear us, but you can unmute and you can make your comments. Okay, we'll come back. Drew, go ahead and move Laura down, please. Sir?
Hi, uh, my name is Herbert Presley. I live at twelve fourteen Greenland Forest, which is, which is east of, uh, the, uh, interstate. Uh, I'm past president of the High Pines Homeowners Association. And the last time I was here, I was paying a traffic ticket. So, uh, any, anyway, uh, the person who just spoke about the trees is, is absolutely right. I took six little trees from my neighbor's yard and put them in mine. One made it. Transplanting trees doesn't really do that well. Uh, and my landscaper did it. I didn't do it myself. But, you know, at the same time, we do need more. You have to face it. We do need more apartments and when I was born, there was a hundred and fifty million people living in this country and now there's three hundred and thirty million. But you don't put apartments in a neighborhood that has houses with eight, nine hundred thousand dollar values. You just don't do it. It's just not something you should do. The part, the apartments they're putting down at, in, uh, uh, by the Walmart. It's not really that bad of an idea because of that area, it should be in. It should be on flat surfaces, not on mountain areas where, where these, our houses are. We didn't buy into that when we bought our houses. And I feel bad for the developers that this is the only way they probably can make money. But the bottom line is they made a mistake. They shouldn't have done it. And they should have bought land somewhere else if they wanted to build that kind of, that kind of property. And
All right, enough.
And, you know, I, I want, I understand there's going to be development there. And I understand about water and everything else. We have to do things in a sensible manner, and this is not sensible. Again, I feel bad for them. I feel, we do need, like for instance, in downtown Colorado Springs, there's going to be a lot of millennials who would like to live down there and you're going to build a big tall building with condos in it, and that's going to be great for them, but they don't really want to live up here. This is not where they want to live. This is not, millennials don't want to live up here. They want to live down there. And when they get the money for a bigger house, they would want to move up here. And you don't, if you do it, there was a, there was a, uh, I, I come from Florida. There was a, a town in Florida called Hialeah. And they would build anything, anywhere that, you know, everybody was in everybody else's pocket. And the town, it looks like crap. And I don't want Monument and Woodmore to look like crap. I want those trees to stay there. I want you to build houses in between the trees so that those people who live in those houses can enjoy those trees and I can enjoy those trees and you can enjoy those trees. And this community will be much better for it. And that's what I think you should do. I think you should postpone it. Think about things and, you know, there's, I don't think there's a rush. Maybe for the developer there is, but not for the people who live here. Thank you.
Sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ren Trudell. I have been in my residence in Monument for thirty-one and a quarter of years. I have generally kept my mouth shut about developments and things that go on in the community. Basically because forty-eight years ago, the community I lived in, we were faced with similar situation. And I started attending meetings. And little did I know that I would wind up being appointed to the Water and Sewer Authority. Gentlemen, you have a job that's a thankless job and I appreciate you for what you do. It's a difficult task what you're doing. What I want to do in my thirty-one years of living up here is just kind of relate some of the things that I have experienced. And in no specific order, because I've jotted notes down as I was going along. And by the way, my residence in Monument is Woodmore. I'm on Doewood. Fourteen twenty, I'm sorry, not Doewood, fourteen twenty Old Antlers Way. On the corner of Old Antlers and Lone Scout Lookout. In the wintertime, when I first moved here, because there was no development from the, uh, Woodmore Heights, the snows would come across. And there would be a twelve to fifteen foot drift behind my house, covering up Lone Scout Lookout. People would never get up the hill there. I would get on my cross-country skis and I would go down Old Antlers into the area where Doewood is now. There is be a fifteen foot drift on the top of the hill. During the planning commission meeting we had, there was a woman who said, I leave a shovel out at my front door. My daughter was one of the participants of using that shovel, along with a phone call I got from her. Dad, I'm stuck. She came down from Denver. Because she says, you know what, Dad, I don't want to live in, in Colorado Springs. I don't want to live in Monument. It's just, is it for me? I want to be in the city. She comes down in sandals, two little kids in the car. I'm down there shoveling. She's helping to shovel. We have an issue with the snow that blows in here. We've had probably for the last fifteen years, relatively little snow per se. And I think this year we're going to have a light snow also, if you can believe what they say about El Nino. So that's an issue with that weather there. Noise. Before I bought my house, I sat there and I listened out those windows for hours, different times of the day. Well, am I going to put up with I twenty-five noise? And the truck stop, oh, the truck stop's going to be awful. Truck stop's not bad. One of the other gentlemen who spoke, talked about the noise of the cars accelerating going up the hill. Yeah. That's an issue. And the brakes on some of the trucks, that's an issue. And one of my neighbors pointed out to me the other day as he walks his dog through the neighborhood, that when he comes down Old Antlers, as he turns and comes out, he says, just the sound of the highway, it's just amplified coming up that street under Pipe Oregon. The sound barriers that was put along I twenty-five only go up part of the way, maybe up to about where the RV station is. Maybe the sound kind of locks in there, but it goes up and over. I get a little more noise that comes off of that. And I don't think that thirty-four foot heights on homes is going to block enough of the sound that's coming through. If I had to live in one of those homes that close to the highway, I would be insane after about three years and I would be moving out. In fact, there are a lot of neighbors of mine who after one, two, three winters, some of them don't even get past the first winter and they're high tailing it out. We used to have a sign and I, you'd probably still see it. Ski Monument Hill. I keep that poster on my house and my license plate. People say to me, where do you ski? Right on I twenty-five, right out my back door. It's great, great. Water is a big issue. Everybody's talked about it. I guess a pet peeve that I have about the water is since, I think it's two thousand and let's check my date here. Two thousand and twelve. I've been paying a fee for the water ranch. For Woodmore, water and sanitation. The water ranch. Somebody, where's the water ranch? Down in Pueblo. Well, somebody else told me it was in Fountain. Because of my involvement previously in a situation like this and get appointed to a Water and Sewer Authority, lots of good insight into what goes on and what developers try to do. It's scary. It's scary. I was afraid to move back or go back to where I lived within the first ten, fifteen years because me as a member of the authority, I was being sued for one and a half million dollars. Now, most of the council members here are fairly new, right? But I was being sued for past member decisions. No. And our solicitor, he says, oh, you can still do business with the developer? This is just doing business. It's going to go away because he's looking for something that he wants. Right? And as soon as he gets what he wants, that lawsuit's going to go away. A month later, the solicitor's sitting there at the meeting and he goes, damn it, we're not going to do business with them anymore because he's suing me.
Sir? This is supposed to be testimony for or against.
I, I, I appreciate the water.
Yeah, can you make the point for or against? Thank you.
Water, okay. Now, another issue is fire. Fire safety, fire mitigation. If it were up to the Tri Lakes Fire Department, they would have me cut every tree on my lot and rock it. And I shake whenever there's a fire. We had the fire down in Waldo Canyon. And I was watching with interest as that was going along. And those houses in the Mountain Shadows area, those houses burned because of the type of construction that was on the roof. And I'm sure they were built with higher retard asphalt shingles. I see houses being so close together here. The fire department is going to have a difficult time trying to control any kind of wildfire that may come through the area. Somebody spoke about wildlife. We have great wildlife that's through the area here. When I first moved in, I had great interest in astronomy, looking at the stars. I've tried to get my neighbors to turn their lights down a little bit because they're afraid at night not to have all the lights on. We talked about the dark skies. It's tough. It's tough. I'm going to go to another point here where we talk about when I come home from up north and I'm going through Douglas County and I see this nice open space from Castle Rock down to Monument Hill and it transitions in nice. That open space is open space only because the Douglas County Commissioners have deemed it so. They realize they have a water issue there. So they've kept that as an open space. And as soon as the town fathers or the county commissioners say, I need some more money. We need some more money. That's going to open up. And if we have a higher density housing, that's going to just go all the way up there. Now, I listened to a number of the people and I'm against the annexation, okay? And, and reason being is when I have discussed with people who are knowledgeable about annexation of Castle Rock Aurora. The reason that they annex is the developers have gone to the counties where they've tried to get the land. And the counties have said, we have a master plan. This is how it's zoned. This is what we want to do. Okay? And they go, oh, jeez, we got to do that. We'll go talk to the town. And the town will generally bend to the developers and get the annexations and get the things that they want. Just be careful. Be careful. Sunday morning, I took a ride because I hadn't ridden.
Sir?
Yes.
We, we have to start wrapping it up. So we're going to have to get to
Yeah, Sunday morning.
Our own talks and we've got more people behind you.
Sunday morning, I took a ride going up, uh, Beacon Light Hill. It's the first time in six years. I avoid that road at all costs, but I figured Sunday morning be okay. That road is as bad now as it ever was. And if, when El Paso County gets around to doing something with that road, I don't think it's going to be good. The steepness on that road, the kids aren't going to walk down and the adults aren't going to walk down to the grocery stores. Forget it. You know, nobody walks around these days.
The good news is, sir, the county is getting to that road.
Yeah.
And they're going to straighten it. They're going to level it and they're going to widen it. Can we
Yes.
Move on to the next person, please?
Yes, give me one more moment.
Sir? You, you've been up there for about ten minutes. So
I, I could continue on for hours.
Actually, I probably
And this is
Understand.
This is, this is one of the reasons why I have avoided getting into the political end of things. It's just, God bless you for being there and doing it. Have fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great. I'll, I'll try to be brief. Uh, Greg Koopman, um, resident of Monument. Uh, this is good to see the, uh, the council with, I think, your, your first big, uh, turnout. Uh, so, uh, it's a good all-nighter. Hopefully we'll, we'll get done before midnight. Um, but I just wanted to highlight, I mean, I have a lot of concerns and I'm not going to rehash the, the water, the safety, uh, the emergency preparedness, all of the things that need to be talked about tonight before you vote on this, especially after hearing this green and what's in or not in that annexation agreement. I want to touch on just a few, few things though. Uh, first and foremost, you know, all the, the community members here, um, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of this community. What we're hearing tonight isn't just public comment. This is public testimony for a public hearing item. Meaning what you're hearing, and in my opinion, it is expert testimony. We had former members of NEPCO, fifty-plus year architect, former members of water boards, master planners, and most importantly, decades-long residents who are in this community who can tell you about the impacts that this is going to have on the people who have lived here, who will hopefully continue to live here. So this is expert testimony that you're receiving and testimony that you have to include in your decision-making process tonight. So I wanted to just remind the council of that. Um, next I want to touch on the comprehensive plan. I don't think we've, we've really covered that enough tonight. Um, it's a good comprehensive plan. I was on the board when we put this together back in twenty seventeen. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of meetings and a lot of people involved, stakeholders from the voting capacity of the town of Monument, from our, our community members and our, our neighbors who maybe don't get to vote in the town of Monument, developers. Everybody was included in the development of this comprehensive plan. And once it was approved, I witnessed it for the remainder of my term, the previous board, and still today, we have developers who come and say, I really want to be a part of your community. But I don't want to follow the rules and the guidelines and the vision that you put together for us. So go ahead and make an exception for us. And that's what we've seen here. There is nothing, nothing about this proposal that is in compliance, not even generally speaking with the comprehensive plan. Nothing at all. That alone gives you the power to say, we're not going to annex you. We're not going to do it. Period. Comprehensive plan needs to be honored. Period. Two. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem King, you touched on the RA zoning. If we were to approve the zoning tonight as is, it's going to make everything moving forward in administrative process. Meaning the voice that we get to hear, the control that we have now in Monument really isn't there. It's all administrative. Not us. Not you. It needs to be looked at. The, uh, the annexation agreement needs to be combed through with a fine tooth comb. Lastly, I'm, I'm going to say it. Other people I know have thought it. I don't like the threat that if you don't do it our way, we're going to go to the county. And I'm going to tell you right now.
Hey.
I'm going to tell you right now. I got a really good hunch, given the rubber stamp behavior that we have seen at the county level. If there wasn't a concern that it wasn't going to get pushed on through, they wouldn't be here. Period.
Okay, this will be the last person in in person, and we have one more. We'll try online, just one more, Laura. And then we will, I don't know what we'll do next. Let's talk to
I'll keep my under three minutes, okay?
Yeah.
Your mayor Mitch and the council members, thank you for your guys' service. And my name is Sarah Ridley. I live on two zero three nine zero Beacon Light Road, directly across the development they're going to do. So, um, I just have a couple of concerns. I've been here for thirty-three So, um, I just have a couple of concerns. I've been here for 33 and a quarter years. So I seen a lot, see Monument grow. So, but what I'm concerned is water. I'm on top of the hill. My well is 1,432 feet. Sometimes a lot of water, sometimes just drizzle. So I'm not sure with 230 homes just directly cross from me, I don't know how that going to do. So second of all, it's 230 on 25 acres. On the other side, we all five acre lot. So 25 acres for 230 homes, base, basically like one acre have 10 homes. It's, it's just not right. It's going to, you know, make our property value drop. We work so hard for it. You know, we want to retire here. But when they move in, the property value going to drop dramatically. So also figure out the traffic. 230 homes with two cars is 460 cars around. And each family has two to four kids, would be 600 to 800 people over there. Is Monument ready for that? I'm not sure. Uh, this is just on west side. On east side, you figure two to four people living there, all the water we're going to use and traffic. So then also there's no park over there. Where are the kids going to play? On Beacon Light, there's kids got killed across the street from the, uh, Trilla Park over there. Just from the traffic, average traffic. Figure 230 homes over there. How many kids going to play on the street? How many dogs going to be there? They're going to poop in my backyard? I don't think so. But anyway, also the traffic. You know, Monument C, 4th July, how many traffic, how many cars over there? Where are they going to park all the cars? So is Monument ready for that? So please consider vote no on that. And also the school and the police. You know, our school is not ready for almost 2,000 people, which is probably a thousand kids to go in. So are we going to build in another school? And police? So there's just a lot of considerations. So, but anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Mr. Anderson. We have somebody online that's waiting. So did you? Mr. Anderson, can you move up? Or you can unmute.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you.
My unmute button moved around on me. Um, good evening. I know, right? Happens to me a lot. Um, anyway, good evening. I know you're all probably exhausted, so I'll make this very fast. I do have a lot of concerns, but I'll, I'll tell you what my main concern is. It's the fact under staff recommendation, um, staff review and opinion for the annexation. It, uh, let's see. Blah, 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 blah. Um, something about, I know it's here somewhere. It generally fits the criteria. Um, the zoning generally fits the criteria, staff recommendation approval. Um, based on the findings that the annexation is in general compliance. I mean, what, how do we interpret that? And I mean, you know, you go to a doctor, they generally know what they're doing. Um, flying a plane, they generally know how to fly. Like, how is that interpreted? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Elizabeth Anderson. Yes, I did. 20243 High Pines Drive. Just, um, 1,500 feet away from this neighborhood. I've been sitting here all night listening to the comments. I was at the planning meeting. This is my first experience in this kind of arena and I, we all really, really appreciate your time. We live in the county, so we don't have a voice in the city. Um, we love our city and I was sitting here all night thinking, and this is how I want to close this meeting. This sign right here says it all. "We are Monument Colorado. We are proud of our past. There are so many long-time homeowners here." You don't see that anymore, guys and women. You just don't. We're a transient community. There are deep roots here, but we are not confident of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, so the public here comments in the hearing are over. Um, do you need a break or are you ready to, you're ready to address? Okay.
There was a lot of overlap in comments and we've been listening and we've had neighborhood meetings and, and the like. Monument Hill Road will not go away in front of the RV park, nor will it go away in front of the property to the north of it, the lady where the attorney is. That's where they get their access today and that's where it will stay. Monument Hill Road that we're talking about going away is to the north of that. In terms of noise, berms, trees, berms with trees, sound walls, higher, um, insulation and, and noise abatement in the actual construction are all individually or in combination ways to address the noise. Um, I'm not particularly in favor of metal sound barriers. They happen to be more of a reflecting agent than they are a, a, a diminisher of sound, but, um, schools in terms of the population, School District 38 already accounts for um, a grand majority of the property on the east side being residential and generating at some point in time in the future, a population of students in elementary, middle school and high school. In accord, in, uh, according to the last report of population, uh, student population to the state school board, School District 38 said they had 600 students from outside School District 38 boundaries. And they have an obligation to take students from inside the district first. So while the schools are, um, seeing pressure, School District 38 wants fees in lieu of land. They don't have an area to build a school, um, or in as close proximity to the schools that they have today. They need schools, structures farther out in the district than what we can provide for them with our land. Um, there was a comment about the Pikes, uh, about the, the flagpole annexation. That's not unusual. Um, the biggest example I can give you is that the Pike's Peak International Waste Raceway south of Colorado Springs was annexed into the Town of Fountain exactly that same way. And the flagpole was about twice as long as what we're talking about, um, with our, um, initial annexation. Um, sanitary sewer on the west side, the annex, we have annexed into the Monument Sanitation District. We have a will serve letter from them to provide the necessary sanitary sewer service. We do ourselves have an obligation to get down Beacon Light Road to connect to their system. That is not on them. That is on us to do in terms of that infrastructure. Um, water. There's been a lot of conversation about it. The east side is Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. It's not the Town of Monument. Um, they have provided a will serve letter to us with, um, uh, the availability of water far in excess of what we're asking for. County, Beacon Light Road, right-of-way ownership. As it stands for the foreseeable future, even after they do their improvements that are coming soon, we've given land. Um, other people have been asked to give land for additional right-of-way all the way down to, um, Wondoka area. The improvements are, um, design is done. They're acquiring right-of-way. They have the funding. Construction is supposed to start, uh, well, it was supposed to start this spring, but, um, it is soon. And when it's done, it stays in the ownership and maintenance uh, responsibility of El Paso County. Let's see, uh, this is an initial zoning, and I know you know this. Um, this is an initial zoning required by state statute. But it, it, there's a lot beyond just initially zoning. There is a lot of work for us to do with you folks in the future if this annexes with the initial zoning. There's development plans. Um, there's, well, in this, in this community, it's a preliminary plat. In the final plat process, um, there was a gentleman that said that RA is not administrative, uh, going forward. But the fact of the matter is the subdivision process is not administrative. We will be back with preliminary plats and final plats as, uh, as this goes forward if we're annexed. Um, there was a gentleman that spoke at length about apartments. We've agreed for a long period of time that we're not doing apartments. It's in the annexation agreement and we intend to, to live by that. So unless there are other questions, I think I've touched on, um, a lot of the pointed hands and, um, there's one comment from the owner about the trees.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for, um, comments, questions, debate. I do have a question for the staff. Can you clarify what the, can you clarify the zoning piece? So we're, we're going from MU to RA. What does that mean going forward if, if this is annexed? Can, can you clarify for me, please?
So they are currently in the county. They would have a county zoning. The MU is the mixed-use, um, land designation from the comp plan. The RA is the residential attached zoning that they're requesting from your land development code.
Okay.
Um, if your question is the process or, so the process would be if they are annexed and zoned today, then they would follow up with a preliminary plat and/or final plat that would go to Planning Commission and Town Council for your review. The site plan would be administrative. That's where they lay out the property. But we are bound by the codes that you as a town adopted. So even though it's administrative, we're not making up the rules. We're following the rules that you and prior councils have established through your zoning ordinance. So they have to meet those standards and that's the site plan. The construction drawings are the next piece where they have to meet the, uh, standards and criteria for the construction of the roads and the sewer and the water and everything else.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I have stuff because I always do. All right. So first off, let's just start from where we're at. This is not open space. I don't think anybody in this room thinks it's open space. So they, they do have certain rights, but they have rights right now with El Paso County. They have some PED rights that are existing currently. They have some commercial zoning. They have R 20,000 and, um, they have one obsolete zone district. Um, it's, this is not zoned for distribution centers. This is not zoned industrial. Um, CDOT would prohibit that, even if, you know, it was zoned for that because of the and, uh, exits on the interstate and are going to have semi-trucks going up Misty Acres. The this property, in my opinion, needs to be a PED. A PED is what uh, should, should go here because this is what PEDs were made for. This has unique characteristics. It has transitional zoning. Um, it needs input from different uh, neighborhoods and, and, and agencies and things like that. It has trees that need to be looked at. If it fails here tonight, it will be a PED in El Paso County. And this is the gateway to El Paso County as someone had mentioned earlier. So let's talk about El Paso County. Because El Paso County rates this area as a suburban place type. According to the master plan, suburban residential is characterized by predominantly residential areas with predominantly single-family detached housing. The place type can also include limited single-family attached and multifamily. Provided such development is not the dominant development type and is supportive and compatible with the overall single-family character of the neighborhood. R 20,000 fits right into that. Suburban residential in El Paso County is under two and a half acres and up to five units per acre. This is off of their website. Whether they follow this or not, I can't speak for them. But the master plan for El Paso County talks about, um, natural areas and to preserve them. Um, this can become something that fits in El Paso County's master plan, suburban residential type, that is something everybody can live with here. But it needs to go through a PED to get there. RA zoning is, is, is not appropriate for this area. Decimating the, the forest, in my opinion, I don't see one tree being saved without it being relocated. Um, there's no way on a five or 6,000 square foot lot, you can save one tree of any kind with the over excavation. Probably 10,000 square foot lots are pretty difficult to save trees. This is, this is not, um, compliant with our future land use map and mostly I agree that the future land use map is probably not probably not the right way to go here, except for the fact that it was decided by the community in 2017 that that was a good use. Um, we, we will be taking the, um, business campus use out. So there's a lot of talk about workforce housing, but we don't have any work. We have no real place of employment here. So we're really in a commuter town. So we're really building houses so that people can commute to Denver, the Tech Center, Carrales Springs, wherever it is. I don't know that we're in a good location for that, quite frankly, and I'm willing to, to open up outside of, to where it would be, like, let's just say, general conformance as far as the future land use map. But at a density that respects the trees, which are an asset to everyone, including the people that own the land right now that can sell lots at a future date um, with, with, uh, with mature trees. That's hard to come by. There's not one area along I-25 from Wyoming to New Mexico, quite frankly, where there is any place that is clear-cut areas this big for housing. Nowhere. You can look in Castle Pines. You can, you can even go up 83 into Parker through the Black Forest up there. You can look at the Pinery in Parker. Everywhere they have trees like this, it's respected. Um, clear-cutting 90 acres is just not consistent with our master plan, our comprehensive plan, or El Paso County's master plan. I believe this needs to be a PED. I have really big issues with giving up one of our um, water options because, and I don't know how much of this you guys know, but we, the west side of town is all groundwater. The east side of town has Tribe View. Tribe View can get water. Right now they're hooked up to CSU and they can get water from CSU. They are diligently piping in a renewable source of water going up roller coaster right now. They might even be through with roller coaster. That will have a continuous supply of water that really comes from the Arkansas River. We have another option here. What's called the loop system where we can bring in water from the Arkansas River as well. But it's a plan. We don't have a, a, um, and we don't have plans. We don't have easements. We don't have land that we've acquired. We don't have water districts onboard entirely that are in support of this. It's probably the best system. But it's taking an option off the table as far as being able to hook up to Tribe View. We can't hook up to Tribe View if we deliver water to a community where the water, it's a ridiculous law, but it's a law, where, where the water flows north to the Platte River instead of flowing south to the Arkansas River. It's, it's a pack that started in Pueblo or something. I'm not really sure, but, but we can't. And technically it's one wat, water molecule cannot flow north of the divide. So if we do this, So if we do this, we take away a big option for the west side of Monument and that really concerns me probably more than anything. But outside of that, I still believe that this project needs to be a PUD. It's going to go through that process, whether it's with us or someone else. I'd like to keep it in the town. I'm willing to, to work and negotiate, but it has to be something that everybody can live with and, and not when you drive over Monument Hill, you're, you're like, what happened to all the trees? And this was such a beautiful area and now it's just concrete. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else on the?
Question? For argument's sake. Right now, the, the annexation proposal in front of us is RA. And this is for you, County Attorney.
It's the annexation proposal. Well, there's two steps, right? There's a rezone and then there's an annex.
Okay, so can we change as a, as a town council, can we change it from RA to PUD? Or does that restart the process?
If the developer did not agree with that change, they could withdraw.
So we could, like, we could approve the annexations. We can have a conversation with the developers to see if they would be amenable to a change in their zoning request. And if, you know, if they are, then we could make the motion based on that. If they are not, we'd have to decide whether we're going to make a motion to pass what they've asked for.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got, we've got a lot of resolutions here. You're going to have to probably help guide us through. I don't think I've ever seen.
So Mr. Cole, um, this could be brought in as a PUD or it'd have to be brought in as a straight zone district with the understanding that it would go to a PUD? No, I understand, but I'm just for, just for mechanical aspect of it.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think it could be initially zoned as a PUD unless missing something. I'm looking at the folks that have worked with your code longer than I have.
So it could be zoned as a PUD, but they don't meet all the procedural because they haven't submitted the development plan and standards to go with it. But it could, I mean, I think you could do a PUD and in the annexation agreement say it has to be done within a certain amount of time.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, and that timing would have to be 90 days to comply with state statute. So there's a requirement that you have initial zoning in place within 90 days of the effective date of the annexation.
And in that 90 days, the developer can decide, we like it, we don't like it as well, correct? They, as part of their discussions, because what I want to avoid is having the discussion now when no one's really prepared to have that discussion. But I, the reason for, for my asking was, do we have that option to present where the developer can go back and, and discuss it amongst themselves and then with staff? And to either agree to the change or?
Or withdraw their annexation petition.
So are you suggesting a continuation?
No. No, I, I'm suggesting if there's, if there's resistance within the council for our, to approve RA for the zone, the rezoning, do we have as a council, do we have the option of rezoning to PUD? And going through the motions of, of the annexation and whatnot. But then I, I want to make sure that the developer has then the option to consider that change and, and not just get dumped on their lap, something that they were not prepared to, to accept essentially. Do, do they have an option to respond to say, okay, we're willing to work? Or yeah, no, that, that doesn't fit in, in what we've spent money on so far.
They, they would certainly have that ability to consider that and determine whether it was acceptable and whether to, to go forward with the annexation. Now you would not be able to, to zone the property PUD tonight.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what Sheila just pointed out is the requirements for the PUD zoning are, are different and procedurally we have not gone through that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think you would have to amend the annexation agreement tonight as well because that currently says RA. And if you zone them PUD, then it nullifies.
It would also probably have to change the service plan. Right?
There would be some changes to the service plan because it currently references the zoning that's set forth in the annexation agreement.
One, and that was the other thing. We, we haven't talked about the metro district's service plan. Are, are we going to talk about that tonight or?
That, that depends if we, we have to, we have to go in order. We have to go in order. So Councilmember Romanelli, you still with us?
I am. 13 hours of travel in East Coast time, but I am here. And Mr. Cole, I remember last time we had had discussion on an issue. I forget what it is right now. We had tried, we passed yes on something, but no on something else and kind of negated the yes. Is this, I mean, obviously we can't just vote for annexing this without voting the rest of it as well. Is that correct or in some form, am I logistically right in that?
Yes, you are. I, I think you're referring to the Beacon Light annexation. And you initially approved the annexation, but you didn't approve the annexation agreement.
Right.
And so that kind of set up the same scenario and, and the annexation didn't go forward because it didn't guarantee the, the development plan zoning that was being requested.
That's, that, that's what I recall and that's what I figured. Um, I, I just want to say thank you to all that, that spoke. And there's a lot of a differing opinion. Also thanks to the applicant for coming back. And I, I just land in the fact that I do want to keep this in the family. I, I, the person that pointed out, you know, a one in five vote at the commissioner level, I, I'd rather keep this in-house and, and keep this here in Monument. Even if we can't agree on every detail and every dotting of the I and crossing the T, I think we should keep it here and keep as much control of it as possible. I do think it makes sense that our boundaries go to county line as a town anyway. So that, that's what I've got for right the second.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll make a comment. My biggest concern is the densities, right? I agree that LLR is too far off the spectrum. That makes it a viable solution for, for both sides, right? And to the points that were made about those that would afford a home that would sit on two and a half acres or whatever it is, I, I don't think we would find that. But I think the density of the, the RA zoning is, is too small and we need to find a middle ground. You, you have been kind enough to come back and work with us. And I, I can't imagine that this council would not find that middle ground in a PUD for you. I, I can't say that I would, I, I know what they're all going to vote, but I've heard their comments tonight and it sounds like we want you to stay. But we need to have those, those staged areas where the land use, the, the density is going to not impact those neighboring residences and some more amenities in, in the zone. PUD is way more flexible. It allows us to do anything. We can talk about every single thing within the PUD. If we stick to a straight zone, yes, there'll be a couple of things that come before Planning Commission and, and the council, but for the most part, it's all going to be done behind the scenes with the town staff. That's, that's my view of this. I, I don't know where it's going to go from here. I, I don't know what other people are thinking. I've heard what, what you guys have said. But you know, clearly I'd love to also see that the water not be an issue. You not have to spend money on buying water from the town and the densities are reduced to reflect that, that delta between what's available and what you'd have to buy from the town. And the reason why I bring that up, and maybe you do or you don't know this, but we just had to put three more wells in. That's, that's not, we didn't want to have to do that. We didn't want three more wells, right? And we do need to figure out whether we're going to go with the loop or the NDS or in the future, a combination of both. And I, I don't want these developments, the west, to, to block what our options are. Cause those options are really important for the entire, not just the town, but there's actually 100,000 residents that would be impacted by what this water authority is that we've approved to create with Cherokee, Denala, Woodmore and the town. It's, that's really important. So it's, it's more than just what's on the west side. It's 100,000 residents that would be impacted by what we do tonight potentially when it comes to water.
I'm in violent, violent agreement that we need to keep these folks in the family, like Jim said. I wa, I want them in the town. As someone so diplomatically said, you can't trust the county. I would put it differently, but I'm trying to be nice. I, I want these folks in the family. I want these folks in the town. As far as the water, there are options. If, not if, because Woodmore is servicing the east side, um, an option that I, I mean, Tom, set me straight. An option is boring under I-25 and have Woodmore service the west side as well. And boring is actually not that expensive. It's expensive, but it's not that expensive. Tribe View's done it. That's how they're servicing the Conexus. Okay, they bored a hole underneath I-25 and Tribe View's servicing the, the, the west side of Tribe View, if you will. So we do have options. But at the end of the, at the end of the night, it's no longer day. At the end of the night, we have to find a way to keep these folks in the family and, and figure out a way that we can compromise. No one's going to be happy, but no one's going to be going home angry. I, i, if we, if we find a compromise to, to meet the, the, the requirements for, for both developer and town, excuse me, town.
Anything from you, Scronic, Sabbath?
Yes, I, um, I've kind of been on the fence about all of this and I've listened to all the comments and I'm, I, I, I agree with Marco says, is there a way to get tonight? That's kind of where, where my head is at. It's like, where can we get tonight? What do we, what's our, what's our end goal? Is our end goal that we want to do a contingent annexation agreement? Because clearly the annexation agreement that's before us doesn't sound like it's going to work. It's going to have to be modified, correct?
Based on the comments I'm hearing, I think that's correct.
Okay, so if, can we, can we get to that place where we say? I mean, it, this, the rest of, the rest of the voting is kind of contingent on the first one. Can, can we vote to say, yes, we want to enter into an agreement, an annexation agreement with some modifications and we'll go forward with coming to an agreement about what those, what, what it should look like. But that we, we want, yes, we want them in, in Monument. We're just not sure how to get there right now.
Could you give staff five minutes to, oh wow? Because I have some ideas, but I'd like to talk with your planning staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have until 11 o'clock.
Will be fast.
Take a recess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see how they're always got it very much.
And they're like. Everybody else. Okay, it's me. You have a nice Instagram.
I was.
Then we too go to the register.
Okay, we're back from the recess. Mr. Cole. Has there been any discussion that we should? Know about and how we're going to proceed?
Yeah, I we. Among staff, we discussed several options that that could be available. We had a short discussion with the applicant's attorney. And I don't think that there's anything that we could offer tonight that would. That would that would cause the applicant to not withdraw. So I think where you are is taking what's before you and and considering it and voting on it.
Well, is it? Is it the? So if there's no way that we can do anything, is is it? Is it your intent that you want to withdraw your application completely? Or? Okay. Well, so the first resolution that we have is Resolution fifty-one twenty-two-three, which is a. A resolution setting forth findings of fact regarding the proposed annexations of a parcel of land to the town of Monument known as Monument Ridge One. So. The way this would work is if if this passes and the others don't, then it's. We have to undo what we pass. So is there a motion for this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a clarification, this first resolution just determines that the property is eligible for annexation. Doesn't annex the property. It doesn't commit you to any other further course. So. You can approve this first resolution and then. Deny. The annexation ordinances.
So we'd have to go through one, two.
So. Yeah, so Resolution fifty-one twenty-two-three. It. Its effect is just to say, based on the evidence that was presented to council. The criteria set forth in the Annexation Act is met, and the property is eligible to be annexed. It doesn't. It doesn't go any farther than that.
Okay.
And so it doesn't commit you to a course.
Okay, well.
Does that need to be done first regardless? Is that what I'm understanding?
It is absolutely the first step in the annexation process. Yes.
Well, I I would move then to pass Resolution fifty-one twenty-two-three, a resolution setting forth findings of fact regarding. Proposed annexation of a parcel of land to the town of Monument known as Monument Ridge One.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Mary La Kind.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next up, we have a resolution approving an annexation agreement between the town of Monument and Monument Ridge West regarding Monument Ridge number one. Any discussion, debate, or questions or comments regarding this one?
So this resolution then does what?
So this resolution says that. The town will proceed and zone the property RA, and if it does not, the the petitioner can withdraw their petition.
Okay.
Well, then to see where this goes, I'm going to make a a motion. Do you pass Resolution number fifty-two twenty-two? Excuse me?
You beat me to it. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving an annexation agreement between the town of Monument and Monument Ridge West LLC regarding Monument Ridge number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King.
No.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Okay, I'm going to make a comment first. I'll keep it short. At first, I appreciate the applicant and all their time and cooperation. Second, I appreciate all the. Residents, all their comments and their passion. I. A lot of things were brought up. You know, about the trees. One thing that wasn't discussed, you know, these the trees are forty, fifty, sixty years old. There's an importance besides the, you know, the the trees absorbing the helping absorb the noise or mitigate the noise. They help with the temperature and the climate. Okay, those those are an important aspect. It's not my sole decision. I'm more keying in on the density of the. The den- the density of the proposed. Duplexes, whatever. In that it's trying to go to from an art, an RA standpoint. I do not believe it meets the comprehensive plan. It does not add to the community. My concerns are with water, safety, road access, and the quality of life. Therefore, I say no.
Councilmember Abbott.
No.
Councilmember Chronic.
No.
Mary La Kind.
No.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Right, that motion fails two to five. Please. I. I hope that this can come back. We can now talk PUD. If not. Good luck with the county. Thank you. Okay. So.
You got to do a report.
Mr. Cole, with. That seems to have. Taken care of the rest of the. Resolutions, I can move on. I'm I'm guessing to. Did we? Is there anything that we need to do at this point?
Oh, I I I think I'd just say for the record, I understood the. The petitioner is based on on the the disapproval of the annexation agreement that they withdrew their petition. And with that, you don't need to take any further action.
Okay, so then we will move on to number nine, which is public comment. Looks like we have a lot of people online, too. So. Public comments are for items that are not on the agenda. So if there is anything that you want to say that's related to what we just went through, please. Please don't because it's for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody who is here that would like to make a comment? Sir, can you? And you've already signed in once, right?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Again, James Villar, I just want to show my appreciation. For all of you adhering, not only those of you who you're representing directly in the town of Monument, but those of us who are impacted directly outside of the area of Monument. So again, thank you for listening to us tonight. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, I just want to bring up one thing while you're standing up here. This is pro- this is going to go to El Paso County, so this is not like it's not like going to stay open space. Okay?
Right.
And so if you. Have the same passion, you're going to need to go down there as well. So.
Understood. Okay, anybody else who's? Anybody else who's here that has something to say not related to what we discussed tonight? Okay, anybody online, Mr. Anderson, that would like to say something? Okay, let's try this again. You can unmute.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for denying this because this would be a very bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you. One more there, Mr. Anderson. Okay, Robin.
Hey, good evening. I would just like to say, I don't know how we do this going forward, but it seems like when we worked with Classic and also this developer. We allow the developer to be the master integrator of what's going on, and I don't think necessarily it's disingenuous, but I do Department of Defense contracts for major weapon systems. And they would never let the contractor be the master integrator for a system. And so, for instance, when we say, you know, they talked to the school and the school didn't want land, they want money. Well, that may not be in the best interest, but if there is a a focal point on the board that was actually integrating these things across. Likewise, with water, we're just trusting like, hey, they showed us a piece of paper and there is enough water. Well, we don't know that. I mean, I'm not saying they're disingenuous. I'm just saying if there was a representation from the board. That in that master integrator role, then it takes the developers out of that role because even if they're very truthful, their lines and the needle will always point to them, no matter what. So thank you very much for being here late.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any others, so we will close the public comment, and we do have a council authorization item, which is that we are canceling. Well, Mike, you can say it.
So the request from staff to choose cancel the regular meetings on the.
Never do that. So staff's request is that we cancel the regular meeting on August twenty-first and schedule joint town council planning commission study session that would be hosted by our town attorney. And and staff.
Hosting, yes, which way? Are you bringing food?
That's what hosting means.
I just I just wonder, since you did approve his contract tonight. Okay. All right, the next up is.
So, yes.
Question, you said. On the same day, the twenty-first or the twenty?
Yes, on the same day, the twenty-first, we're going to cancel the regular meeting. In place of that, we're going to have a joint town council planning commission study.
And and this is the picture day.
It's pictured in.
Just so you know, it is picture day.
Well.
I I got guys, I got another company trip that I got to be on with 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 my company. I will not be there for picture. I'm sorry.
I will.
Well, there's plenty of pictures of you online. We'll get one.
I will. I will. Will I have? Will will there be access to link or go via web on this meeting? Because I will be out of state.
Yes, we will. We will have access to.
That's fine. So.
Teams.
Great, teams.
Yep.
All right. Next up is council comments is.
Is that a? Is that a yay?
Yeah, that's a yay. We're good. Council comments, Ms. Abbott. It's chronic. Mr. Fiorito.
Uh, just one in twenty-six parts.
Mr. Kimpel.
Yes, I have two. I have I have two comments. One, I'm wondering if there is a. Dust plan at the construction site.
What?
Dust plan.
The the one that we discussed with.
So.
Might as well tell them what we.
So if Laura, so you know, like, okay, I'm working three construction projects down at By Airfield. So every one of every one of those construction projects that I'm involved in, I have to review and approve the dust plan to mitigate dust because of the winds. The winds here in Monument, the other week. All the all the dust that was blown from the construction site behind Walmart or going over to the across Jackson Creek Parkway, all the cars had to stop because you couldn't. You couldn't drive through that. And that was the same thing coming from south of the pilot station going across I twenty-five. So that's what prompted me to kind of think about that.
We do have dust mitigation on all the construction projects, and so our inspector we met with today, and we also met with two builders today and talked to them about what their plans are. We're meeting our our inspectors meeting. He met with another builder today, and we'll be visiting all the sites to have water trucks out there. If you notice. We've had a couple of things this year. One is too much rain, and we had flooding on all the construction sites. Two, we've had noise complaints, and we've addressed those. And then now that everything's drying up, we have dust complaints. So our our inspector has been very busy running around and and enforcing all this, but he is doing it.
Okay, so second. Constructionary working hours versus the town ordinance. I've gotten plenty of emails and phone calls or gotten stopped while I'm walking the dogs. The most recent incident was, I believe, last Wednesday or Thursday. I was woken up at five fifteen in the morning by loud bang noises, sound like cars were hitting one another. And I jumped out of bed, and I looked over at the home, you know, about a half mile away. I looked over at Home Place Ranch, and it was a garbage truck emptying all the construction dumpsters and then slamming it back down on the ground. So I if I heard that from half mile away and woke me out of a dead sleep. The folks that are right up against it in Sanctuary Point and in Promontory Point, I'm sure. That's pretty bad, but.
And we just.
I'm pers- I'm personally tired of seeing and hearing the construction work. I have talked to you. I've talked to others.
We had a meeting today with both of the home builders out there. Mayor Protem and the mayor were in that meeting, and we got promises made. They're going to put up. Construction signs out there that are going to be in both Spanish and English that are going to instruct the contractors on when our working hours are. And then our police department has been visiting out there, and our PSAs have been visiting out there, and also one of our elected officials has been visiting out there.
So my other question is. Because we've gone through this before.
Right.
Heard the complaints before, whether it was Classic Homes building or if it was now on Home Place Ranch, soon to come forward down on the Conexus area. Are we sending out official letters notifying the companies that this is it? Next step is next step is to receive a fine.
So.
They start taking it seriously instead of we're working with them. We've talked to them. They've agreed. When do we start holding them accountable once and for all?
So we've sent out letters. We've held meetings with them. We don't have the opportunities to find them currently, and so there's no fines. We are bringing it to you. We're bringing it to you. So we're working with Bob, and Bob's going to be writing up a fine schedule, and so there is the town. Yep, it's probably going to probably, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, the way I think I am, it's probably going to be higher up the list than that. So, yes, that is on our project list.
Anything else? On that note of the fine schedule. I would like a minimum fine set. So that it's not up to the judge to determine what that fine is, and it's it's there's a minimum and a maximum. Cool.
So I'm one thing. So I just want to say to everyone here, when we make these decisions, we have protocol to follow. We have procedures to follow, and one of them is not what El Paso County is going to do to us. We can't make decisions based on that, I don't believe, and certainly it weighs in to some degree, but we can't control them. We can control us, and. I I think we were fair in trying to negotiate with them to to come in with a PUD that would benefit everyone, but clearly that was not something that was their intention. So. I I will be with El Paso County when this moves forward because we are out of the loop now, and. Express my concerns there. So thank you, everybody, for all of the thoughtful discussion.
Okay. Jim, it's your favorite time. Would you like to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We are adjourned.